I'd like to call this meeting to order, September 14th. Committee of the whole. I'd like to acknowledge that we are on the on-seat at lands of the MiMA. Record of attendance? Any absence with regrets?
Counselor Darius?
Make a motion to excuse your worship from the meeting? She had another duty?
A secondary on that? Seconded by Counselor Hatfield. All in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Any declarations of conflict of interest? You can declare at the time. Any additions or deletions? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as is?
Seven.
Seconded by Counselor Lesser. All in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. No presentations today? Eight A, staff report, CAO report. Any questions or concerns with that? Nobody? Any questions or concerns for the CAO report?
None.
Okay. I'll let you off easy today, Jeff. Eight B, fire department report. Is Mike here? Okay. Okay. Mike isn't here, so any questions, we'll save for later. Eight C, operational services. Any questions for Chad? Counselor Lesser, please go ahead. Oops, sorry. Counselor Lesser's up.
It's not a question, just a thank you. Drove by on, I should know the name of the street. Hibernia? Prospect? Yeah, the crosswalk. And I was, I drove by and saw and I was like, it's awesome. It got done. So, everybody knows how much I love my crosswalks, but it was, it was good to see that. So, thank you. Yep.
It was a lengthy review. Counselor Darius, go ahead.
Thank you. Just one quick question, only because the question was asked of me and I don't know the answer. The buses that we run, are they the best vehicle for that particular use?
It's a difficult question. I mean, there's so many factors involved. It's the best compromise for the size. If we go any larger, you're reducing the mobility of the bus. Like, we need to get in and out of very tight spaces, but... What is the issue exactly? Like, what?
I believe the question arose out of the number of repairs that have had to be affected over the years. That's all.
Oh. Yeah, there are more robust frames and styles of buses, but again, that gets you into a more expensive, longer-wheelbase bus that may not suit the community's needs, so...
Okay.
It's, sorry, it's a vague answer, but it's a...
Nope. It's an answer, thank you.
Things are made the way they used to be. Let me put it that way.
Okay. Thank you, Chad.
Counselor Hatfield?
Hi, Chad.
Hi.
Just noticed in your report that you had installed Heritage District signs. Are those new signs or are those the banners or what was...
Nope, those are some larger signs that I believe have been in storage here for a few years and the installation got a bit postponed because of the pandemic.
Where were they installed? Do you know right off the top of your head or...
I was hoping you wouldn't ask that.
Okay, I'll go look, but I just...
No, I think both locations are on Collins Street, right around Collins and School and then closer to the downtown.
Okay, okay. Good, thanks.
The mayor left me a question to ask here. She just wanted to know the conditions of some of the parking lots, say, at Dollarama and Canadian Tire, although those aren't really our responsibility. How far off the road is our responsibility? And is there any kind of pressure, anything that we could do to put onto businesses to make sure kind of the safety factors there? If anyone's played the Mario Kart through there the last little bit, it's...
Yeah. To answer the first part of the question, the commercial property owners are responsible for their entire driveway entrance to a parking lot. To answer the second part, it's really outside of public works jurisdiction. I don't know if it would fall under unsightly and dangerous. It's a bit of a gray area, I guess.
That's, we can make contact with the property owners and try and get an update on what their plan is. I don't know why, I don't know why some of the parking lots are in as bad a shape as they are. I can't imagine that the owners know about it and are okay with it. So, leave it with us and we'll try and get an answer.
Perfect.
I might add, it's, you know, they're probably, the property owners are probably having the same experience we are, getting the contractors to do work.
Yep.
So, if we're not on the top of the list...
Right.
I highly doubt a few holes in a parking lot are on the top of contractors' list.
Exactly. Nope. And the other question here is just about the Maud Lewis Trail. I noticed that was sprayed or looking a lot better. The question the mayor has here, are there any thoughts about what we could do to kind of make the community responsible a little more? She has here maybe a reward if someone reports somebody or whatnot. It just seems to be an ongoing problem. I was contacted by a group who does walks around and said there were some seniors that thought, you know, it was kind of unsightly, kind of not respectful, kind of some of the words that were there. It looks great now, but how long does it stay? And just wondering how long maybe in between the original building, the fix now, how long that's been to kind of, is this something that you foresee as being a continual issue?
Are we talking specifically the graffiti on...
Just the Maud Lewis Trail more than anything.
So, I'm not sure if you're aware, but we had an issue with graffiti a couple of months ago. You brought that to our attention and so we contracted a contractor to spray like an asphalt sealant over the area and it has since been painted with graffiti.
Already, yeah.
So, just as of, I think, this morning or yesterday, so it's ongoing. It's discouraging to staff. You know, we, I guess, at some level, we're accepting a certain level of graffiti as long as it's, you know, tasteful, I guess. I don't know. It's an issue that Jeff and I discussed just this morning.
Counselor Bell?
Thank you, your worship, Chad. I just noticed that the work has been done on the Rutter's Marina, the decks for the Marina. And it gave me pause to ask whether there's been a review post Shark Scramble and how staff felt about how things worked out as far as the event was concerned and the war situation. Just report that.
Yep, not a formal review. I know there's been some communication between Marina staff and the organizers of the Shark Scramble and as far as I know, things went very well. So, we can, we can get together and do, you know, a bit of a formal review.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. CAO?
On the graffiti, as Chad mentioned earlier, he and I had a brief conversation. There've been some emails among staff. Obviously, everyone is disappointed with what's happened. It was bad enough in the first instance, but then, you know, staff have spent some taxpayers' money to try and make that less offensive and nicer like the rest of the community. And so, that's unfortunately not been respected. So, perhaps Chad and I, I mean, there were some ideas thrown around by staff, perhaps we can come up with a bit of a report to council with some options that might discourage that sort of, sort of activity. And I'm thinking, you know, thinking out loud, well, I won't think out loud, I'll hold it in and we'll come back to council with some suggestions. There'll be a price tag attached, but, you know, when I was, I went through there a couple of weeks ago and it...
Council with some suggestions?
Yeah, it was, it's not...
There's, there'll be a price tag attached, but, you know, whatever.
Who's that?
She loves to hear herself so much, huh?
I'm not sure what's going on there.
Yeah.
There. Stopped him. We'll come back with a report and we all know what it is, so I'll stop talking and...
Counselor Darius?
Yeah, just one final thing that came to mind is the bicycle lane that's been created on Parade Street. I know we talked earlier on with Mark and he said that it was just a matter of paint to add more of the bicycle logos and I wondered if that could be done because I tell you three or four times now that I've been on Parade Street and noticed cars parked on the bike lane in an area like, you know, if you, if you don't notice the bike when you're driving up the street, you might, you might not know that it's bike lane. So, if just a few more of those logos could be added, that'd be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Chad? Thank you, Chad. Eight D, economic, or planning and economic development. Natalie is not here, I believe, vacation, so I'll have to hold questions for her. Engineering report. Any questions for DiMario? Anyone? Perfect. Finance. Any questions for Jerry? Good, good. Frank, I'm not sure if Frank's here today. Nope, Frank isn't here, so you'll have to hold your questions there. So, that's it for staff reports. I'd just like to say I think our staff does a great job in getting their reports out early to us so we can read them, always very thorough and very much appreciate it. Knowing A, Meadowfields Playground. You want to take this one?
Yeah, if I may, I'll just speak very briefly to it. My original intent was, of course, to kickstart the program, the project. As you know, it's a $338,000 playground project. They've already gone one school year without the playground and certainly won't have it done this year and possibly not the year after. At any rate, I'm hoping that council at some time in the future will see fit to make a substantial donation to the fundraising effort. They've been working on it for several months and in fairness, they're full-time teachers, so they're not fundraisers. And I think they've managed to accumulate about $15,000 so far, so they have been able to actually commence the project. At any rate, what I'd like to do, if it's appropriate, is to table this motion once again.
We need a secondary for that, Chad? Secondary? Anyone like to speak to that?
You don't speak to that motion.
What's that?
Sorry.
Just table it.
You, when it's moved to seconded, you call for the vote immediately. You don't discuss that motion.
Perfect. All in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded?
Thank you.
Motion carried. Nine B, Counselor Darius, would you like to speak to that again? This is the South End playground one?
Yes. Prior to the Paint the Park initiative that Steve, that Deputy Mayor was quite involved in, we had done a tour of the playground at the south end with the parks manager and noted a number of deficiencies or things that could be improved or should be improved, including the demolition of a derelict building and replacement of a stage and other things. Unfortunately, I don't believe it's in their budget, in the park budget, to complete that work. And so, my motion would be to recommend that council direct staff to prepare a report of the deficiencies of the south playground with a plan to address the issues, including a cost estimate and options for funding the improvements. And that's my motion. Thank you.
Seconded by Counselor Darius. Any discussion about that one?
I'd like to say Gil and I did go down with Todd and walk through and if you seen there's, if you take a, there's some paint on it, it looks a little better, but yeah, definitely need it. And it's nice to have a plan moving forward and knowing Todd as well as I do, I'm sure he'll come up with something great, so...
More questions? Hearing none? All in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Community Navigator, Terms of Reference. Counselor Bell? Would you like to speak to that?
There you go. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just would like to make a motion to have the CAO provide terms of reference for the Community Navigator Oversight Committee position. This is arising from me being delegated as an alternate to attend a meeting in June and the contents of the meeting in June left me to have some questions about, you know, what are the terms of reference and what are my responsibilities as a counselor? And so, I received the minutes from that June meeting this week and it reminded me that I hadn't yet been able to look at the terms of reference. So, just a motion to ask the CAO to just go back to the committee and get those terms of reference for us to review.
Perfect. I have a secondary? Seconded by Counselor Lesser. Any more discussion on that one? Hearing none? All in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Ten A, Department of Municipal Affairs, MGA Consultation Survey.
So, Mr. Chairman, the Department of Municipal Affairs is doing a consultation on the Municipal Government Act. It's a municipal government act, if you've ever flipped through it, it's a very long document and covers a lot of territory in terms of what we do as municipalities, provides our rules of operation. So, they've sent out a survey and I, last night I sent you a, I don't know if Lindsey might have, before that, sent you a PDF version of that survey so you could come prepared for today. When I received it, it was, I was questioning whether or not they wanted my thoughts or that they want each of your individual thoughts and the answer that came back is they want your thoughts collectively, one answer from the Town of Yarmouth on these questions. So, in order, in order to do that, I've asked Lindsey to set up a survey. So, does everybody have their phone? We're going to play.
Played a few.
Everybody have a device? You can use your computer if you don't want to use your phone? And you need to go to www.menti, M-E-I, M-E-N-T-I dot com. M-E-N-T-I dot com. There's a number on the screen here.
General, we are, you can say 4318, uh, 284. Yep. Put that number in, you'll be looking at a screen, it's a lot of phone information. Consultation survey. Counselor Darius?
So... Okay, so, this is it. The process considered MGA changes, narrative here for their survey, plus challenge. So, question number one, is there a specific... Okay, there's a specific about the support of proposed change to allow posting of public notices on a publicly accessible website on the County of LCA as an alternative to the newspaper. So, right now, there are a couple of things that are appearing for planning amendment we need, thank you, we need to advertise in a local newspaper. During the pandemic, this became a topic of conversation. So, do you support a proposed change to allow as an alternative to the newspaper? So, go ahead and answer yes or no with your device and when I have five, six, sorry. When I have, well, I have six, so let's review the answer. So, we have five yeses and a no. Do we want to discuss?
Thank you, David. So, I voted no on the motion because of the, because as an alternative to a newspaper as opposed to in addition to a newspaper. And the reason that I voted no is that in our interests in transparency and accessibility, I think we forget that people are not proactively inclined to go seeking information. That just is not, I do, I think that statistics would bear that out on our public sites, that they are not heavily trafficked. Sometimes it's important to bring information to people in a forum that they expect so that they then can become aware of it. And as degraded as, as print and media have become, print still does reach a significant amount of people and the tradition is that people seek that kind of information and expect it to be there in that forum. And so, I think that we will, if we agree to this, and I'm sure we are going to, but just for the record, I feel as though we will be taking a step back from communicating with our public if we do this. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Counselor Darius?
Yeah, the newspaper lady raises a good point. I've been a subscriber to the Vanguard for 30-some years, so, and I admittedly, when I read that, it didn't jump out at me that it was an alternative. Anyway, I think it's a nice addition to the newspaper. I don't know that it's an alternative.
Thank you. Counselor Heather?
Is there a way for us to put that information in when we respond to this question, that we would be, we would more like to see it as an addition?
Yes.
I think, I agree with what Counselor Bell has said, but on the flip side of that, I see young people not subscribing to newspapers. And so, they're going to be looking for it from, on, you know, the internet. And, but, as Counselor Bell has also said, people don't go always looking for that kind of thing if they're not interested, you know, if it's not of relevance to them, people don't often go look to see, oh, let's go see what's new going on at the Town of Yarmouth or whatever. So, I think it would be real, but I do believe that there are a large number of people that don't get the newspaper and so therefore would not have access to that information. So, I think it would just be a really nice addition that we still do both.
Anyone else? Counselor Cleveland?
I'd like to bring up just a couple of points. First off, the way I read it, and perhaps I read it wrong, but the way I interpret it, I guess, is more accurate, is in my mind, I saw it more as posting it on social media as opposed to just on a publicly accessible website. We wouldn't quietly put it there. You go where the people are. I know that a couple of you have a deep connection to the newspaper. I haven't had a newspaper subscription in 30 years or more and haven't picked up a paper, a physical paper, probably in 20, easily. I just don't and I think most people don't. I also feel that as someone who's protecting the taxpayer coffers to a degree, advertising a newspaper is on the expensive side. And so, sticking it on Facebook is cheap and free depending on which way you want to go. So, that's why I automatically went to yes. Perhaps I'm wrong, but that's kind of the way I feel.
Thank you. I like the idea of addition to. I do think that there's probably a group of maybe seniors that can hear more to the paper or whatnot and I think in addition to, you would capture who you already have plus more. So, anytime we can engage more of the community, I think that's a good thing. So, keeping in respect and to accessibility to our elderly population and also considering that a lot of our youth does do social media and whatnot, I think in addition to would be the way that I would.
We talked about this probably a couple of years ago and somebody pointed out that the province actually, when they purchase ads, they often purchase them in like the Claire Shop or the Lobster Bay Shop, again, because it's less expensive. But I don't know that that qualifies as a newspaper, but, you know, what's the news in there? Anyway, so, you know, cost is a factor and so where are we at? We were divided six to one. I have a feeling now we're probably more even. I just need one response, it's a yes or a no. Hands up for no. No, no to this question. Would you want a publicly accessible website as an alternative to the newspaper? If you would not support that, if you could show me your hand? Yep? I was expecting actually a publicly accessible website. Our... Yeah, yeah. That's right. It is a website, a WWW. It is townofyarmouth.ca would be our publicly accessible website. It's... Yeah, so there's, there's no, there's no requirement. You don't have to log into it, right? You can just go to the address and you can see the information. In terms of accessibility, I know Mike has a project to make our website, you know, screen reader friendly and that sort of thing. There are different parts of the MGA where they specify that we have to put certain information on our website. So, the assumption is every municipality has a website, it's probably a safe assumption, but that is the standard that they use in some parts of the act. But on notices, and we're going to go through the types of notices in a second, they, they have this newspaper requirement and anything else we do, whether it's websites, social media, you know, sandwich boards on the sidewalk, that's all at our discretion and subject to our own policies. So, are we a no on the alternative?
I'm a no.
I'm a no.
Okay, then we'll skate away, we'll keep going. So, next question. Posting on a website may be a barrier to some residents, thank you, without access to the internet. Do you anticipate this being a concern for your municipality? So, are you concerned that some of our constituents might not have access to the internet for information that we would post on our website or notices? for information that we would post on our website or notices? Lock in your answer. We're at four, five, still leave one. Six, here we go. So, four out of six say no, they're not concerned about access to the internet. If there's no discussion, we'll go with no.
No questions?
Okay, we'll skate away. Would you also like to see a requirement to physically post the notice in other prominent locations accessible to the public? So, we said, we, we, we said that we don't want the website as an alternative to the newspaper. So, in addition to that, would you like to see a requirement to physically post notices on public hearings, whether they be in the lobby at town hall or in the lobby at mayor center or at the public library? Go ahead and lock in your answer. Somebody's holding no.
I'm hoping it was a yes. Says prominent locations.
Yep. The provinces are going to come and tell us what that is. Okay, so we got four out of six say no to that. We don't want to be told we have to post these things physically in the community. Currently, that's the status quo. If we do it, it's our discretion. So, we're good? Okay, so next one is please indicate by checking all that apply if you support the posting of public notice on a website for the following items. Public hearing for the sale or lease of municipal property. So, right now, we have to publish a notice in the paper. And again, this is about, do you support the requirement to put it on a website?
So, is this in addition to the paper or is this just on?
Well, we simply want the requirement in the paper.
Yeah.
Well, we're not, we're one of fifty.
Yeah, so.
So, you might assume that it goes the other way. Right? What if the momentum of other municipalities means that no longer will post in a newspaper?
Why do they ask?
What's that?
Why do they ask? It has to be.
You have to ask the question. Should I have to ask the question first question?
Yeah, I'm confused as to, I think every question is next to the first part of it. I'm having it there. There are some questions here before it.
So, okay, so look at the other way. Look at the other way. Imagine we got a hearing and we still want the requirement to post in the newspaper. Would you make an exception for a public hearing, this room, sale recently? Say that doesn't rise to the level of required newspaper. Right now, it's required in the newspaper, right? So, if you're happy with the status quo, if you're happy with the status quo, say no. Right? You got six? Sorry if I'm making this too confusing. Okay, we would be okay with that, just on a website. Okay? Special purpose tax accounts. So, we are required to hold a public hearing if we have a special purpose tax account and we want to use the money for purposes. So, we collect money for a local improvement from people on the street. So, if we're putting a sidewalk in the street part of the Levitt area, area of residents on that street, turns out it includes sidewalks, it's a money that we're, if we donate money to the taxpayers, we have to go and have a public hearing and say, you know what? We want to spend the rest of this money on trees or we want to spend the rest of this money on whatever. So, right now, that requires a public hearing. So, the notice of that public hearing, if you would like to make sure that gets in the newspaper, say no. Otherwise, say yes. We have five. Everybody in? There we go. Okay. Oh!
Someone call Pam.
Yeah, that's right. This is very busy.
Someone call Pam for the tiebreaker.
Okay, tie goes in the negative in municipal councils. So, we're going to take this one as a no, that has to be in the paper, no change. Okay, sale of the strained goods, and I have to say, I didn't, I didn't look up what the strained goods were. I draw a blank on this one for you. If anybody knows what the strained goods are?
Goods are destroyed for some of this half of the person's street. They should advertise some goods for sale in newspapers circulating in the area of the sales.
Okay, so somehow we come into possession of some goods that we want to sell. Right, so then, I don't know if this has to do with default on a lease or. So, if we want that to be in the newspaper, say no. If we're okay with it just being on a website, say yes. Thank you, Lindsay. Need one more?
How many of you understand me correctly? Yeah, do you repeat what you said just now? If you want.
So, questions would you be okay with that on a web, being that because of website? And then need as an alternative? So, if you wanted to pay first, say no. This is one of the numbers you can do in the paper. That's a no, so it makes sense as it says.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. It was the strained goods.
Okay, so we're okay with the strained goods just on the website. Okay? Tax sale advertising. So, when we have a tax sale, that one's a little more familiar. We're having a tax sale, we're selling people's products because they didn't pay their taxes. Okay? Right now, that could be a paper. If you wish that to continue, say no. If you would be okay with that just being on our website, say yes. And we're there. And a hard no, thank you. Adoption of bylaws. So, when we do land use bylaw amendment or we adopt a new bylaw, we have to put an ad in the paper. And when that ad is published, it becomes law. If you're, if you want that to continue, it's in the newspaper before it comes law, say no. If you're okay with us just putting it on the website and it's law, say yes. We have five. We have six. Okay, tie goes to the runner. No, it is, we're going to stay with the newspaper unless you guys want to thumb wrestle over it.
I guess I'm misinterpreting the way that this question's being asked. Because to me, the question is, do you want this on your website? And the answer is everything on the website.
But is that a counter?
But that's not what it says. I'm sorry, it doesn't say that. That's what confused me as well.
It's not an addition, it's as.
It's an alternative, right? The way they work this question does not say it as an alternative, but that's where they are at, right? They don't have to make it law for us to put something on the website. They do it all right. They do it all right. We're going to throw it to safety. This is as an alternative. Are we, are we okay or we want to? Tie goes to the runner. Okay, requirements for adoption of planning documents. So, I actually used planning in the last example, but again, this is planning, so it's special, why it's not here. Do you want to have to require continued advertisement in the newspaper? Say no, we don't want it to be just on the website, no. If you, if you're okay with it just being on the website, say yes. I'm waiting for my six every time. There we go. Okay, so we're okay with this just on the website for planning documents? Okay? Okay, public hearing for planning documents? We have four. Six, here we go. No, public hearing for planning amendments have to be in the paper. That's what we're saying? We're good? Notice of sale, notice of sale land no longer needed for parks, playgrounds and public purposes. So, this is something we recently talked about. The council is that when we do a subdivision, the town can accept cash or land or, it is land or cash, and then five percent of the value of the lots created. The town of Yarmouth always, almost always, takes cash. There was a time when we took land and there may be a time again when we'll take land, but in most cases, we take cash and create a reserve account. If the land, and we've had this situation where the land is no longer required for park purposes, now I'll give you an example. If you go up Charles Crosby Drive on the right-hand side, as you look over a grassy knoll at Superstore, that piece of land, that grassy knoll, was once a piece of land that we acquired through a subdivision, five percent dedication for parks, parkland. In order to allow the development in the street to occur, the town had a public hearing to release that land from that requirement. So, it wasn't seen by council the day that a park would necessarily be a better, a better fit there, I guess. So, sometimes, you know, you take land and things happen and it's no longer the best place for a park. There's a public hearing required for that. Would you support the notification being just on the website? That would be a yes. Or do you want it to continue to be required in the newspaper? That would be a no. We have a no, four to two. Okay. Moving on. Notice of public hearing for street closures.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes for answers.
Oh, well, the one on the right would be the no, yes.
They're top and bottom. They're top and bottom for us.
Yes, a yes.
I got a feeling I know which one's going to win here.
The yes on the right would be a no. So, if we have a street, and so, the extension of Clemence Avenue into Broadbrook Park was an example of that, where we closed the street so that we could have a park and a driveway as opposed to a public street. It changes, you know, the ability to put a gate on it, as an example. So, right now, if you, if you believe that should still be in the newspaper, the yes on the right-hand side.
Through top and bottom.
That's what you said before.
Yes, it is. The yes on the right-hand side is the no. The no, it's in the paper.
I'm just going to vote yes.
Just vote yes. Sorry, folks. Oh, darn, sorry. Here we go. There's our answer. So, that's a no. That yes is a no. It's going to be, it's going to be in the paper. Moving on. Are there any items not included in the list that you feel strongly should be included? Anything that were required, that you would like us to be required to only put on our website and not put in the paper? I can't think of anything myself, but if there's anything you could think of, open-ended question. There's no answer on this one. Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. Don't worry about it. We good? Okay, notice period. Okay. Assuming that they're going to allow notices for some things only on the website, the question is, do you feel the current notice period of fourteen days should be changed for any of the following items? So, if we'll just put it on the website and we're concerned that not everybody's looking at our website, it might take a little longer for people to hear about it and go to the website. So, I think they're asking a longer notice period, not shorter. Public notice for sale or lease of municipal property. Fourteen days, okay? Less than, okay, good, three options. Less than fourteen days, fourteen days is sufficient, or more than fourteen days. Five, six, eight? Oh, no, we don't have six yet, somebody's. There we go. Thank you. Sufficient, fourteen days, thank you. Special purpose tax accounts. This is where we've collected money for one thing and we're going to use it for another. Fourteen days, more or less? Fourteen days is sufficient? Okay, adoption of bylaws, new dog laws, new noise laws. Fourteen days, more or less? Oh, there we go. Sufficient? Public hearing for planning documents. Okay. Okay. Notice of land, sale of land no longer needed for parks, playground and public purposes. Sell the park. There we go. Okay. Do you have any initial feedback to share relating to public notice periods? Okay? Electronic delivery and receipt of tax bills and preliminary notices of sale. Where are you guys going? Workday's not over.
Take me with.
Does your municipality support this proposed change to enable electronic delivery and receipt of tax bills and preliminary notices of tax sale? So, the preliminary notice of tax sale goes to the owner when there's, you know, two years, full two years in arrears, we send them a preliminary notice. It goes in the prior mail. What they're suggesting about tax bills and preliminary notices is that they could be done electronically. You support that? Yes or no? Need two more. There we go. Yes. Four to two. Skating away. Do you have any concerns with electronic delivery and receipt for tax bills and preliminary notices of sale? Just an open-ended question. Okay, so if you have a concern and you want to type, now would be the time to type. Or you can tell us later and we'll fill it in. Yeah, if you want to talk, Lindsay will take your comment.
I just want, I have concerns regarding that, just the, you know, people get so many emails and stuff and. you know, people get so many emails and stuff and sometimes you could easily miss those, right? So, if that's the only means of people getting notification, you know, they could, it could very easily be missed. I mean, I do get a few of my tax bills or water bill and stuff electronically, and I really wish I had never signed up for that because I don't, I see it sometimes and it's just like, you know, yeah, you know, like I'll deal with that or I don't even see it. I personally like to have that paper in my hand and visually see it and deal with the matter and I just think there's probably still a lot of senior people out there that would be the same way and it could easily get missed if it's just sent, if electronically is the only means of sending it. So, that would be my concern.
Okay, so we can note that concern and pass that along. Any other comments? I think that's generally the biggest concern people have about it is. Okay. Digital submission of planning documents. Currently, planning documents are subjected to review by the Director of Planning and with the province of Nova Scotia through the clerk and are required to submit four certified copies of the documents to the Director. If not subject to review by the Minister, the documents are approved and two certified copies of the documents are returned. If subject to review by the Minister, the Minister will return two certified copies, either approved, amended, or rejected, sort of. The contemplated change is to modernize the planning document review process by enabling the process to be done digitally. So, that would mean our planning Director, our planner would send the documents through to DMA, Department of Municipal Affairs, and they would do their process and send back electronically. So, the question, does your municipality support a proposed change to allow these documents to be submitted and returned digitally? Yes or no? We all do, that's great. Thank you for that because I think that's, that's something that's low enough volume that it can be tracked and if something, an email gets missed, it will be missed and it will be followed up, so, thank you, I think that's the right answer. Do you have any concerns with digital submission of your planning documents? And from my perspective, I have no concern with that, just to let you know. If you have any concerns, speak now. Okay, we'll skate away. Terms of development agreements. So, currently, MGA lists what terms must and what may be contained in a development agreement. They've heard from municipalities that there's a desire to expand the list, for example, the ability to specify where parkland can be. Are there additional terms you feel should be included in the list of content for a development agreement that are not currently captured? There's a wide-open question. But it's yes or no. If yes, then K Y, yes. So, be prepared, if you say yes, we're gonna have some details. Pardon me? No, if you say yes, you've gotta give the details of what you, what you want included. Uh, he hasn't, and we can call Tony down if we wanna.
I'm not quite about to answer that question.
We got four noes, if that helps you. There we go, five noes, thank you. Do you have any additional feedback on the topic? We'll move along. Off-site improvements or cash and lieu necessary to support a development. So, recently, a change was made to the HRM charter. So, HRM has their own charter. It looks very much like the Municipal Government Act, but there are differences. Enables the ability to require off-site improvements or cash and lieu contributions through a development agreement where the improvements are necessary to support a development, i.e. requiring existing park upgrades, transportation facilities, or undergrounding of power. These are often limited to the site itself, which are not always the best or most practical areas for these improvements. So, the question is, would you be supportive of this proposed change? That would be enabling through the MGA, all municipalities to have the ability to require improvements or cash and lieu for infrastructure that is off-site of the development in order to support the development. Yes, so, I'll give an example where the town would be looking at such a thing in fact. So, the mobiles that store staples that develop occurred, actually, they didn't want a traffic light. And the town required a traffic light, so they paid for it, it was off-site. But in the case of the management, they didn't feel that they should have to pay for it. This would give us the town the ability to say, you know, based on traffic setting, that they need to require more. This would create a problem on Jarvis Road because they would require them to mitigate that issue that they're creating by paying the traffic lights and shit. So, in some cases in the past, where we've been able to negotiate successfully but not require, the HRM charter allows them to require that and I do think in the case of a situation where a developer just flat-out refuses, you know, it does give you an extra lever that you can pull. Okay? That's right. Okay, we got four, six, there we go. So, yes, we would be supportive, that's great. I think that's an additional, as I say, another lever that we, that we could have in our toolkit. Would your municipality also support the ability to allow a lien to secure these off-site improvements? So, in the case that maybe those improvements can't be made in a timely manner for other reasons, because they're off-site, construction season, what have you, that we could actually put a lien on the property to ensure that we, that we actually get paid for those improvements. So, would you support the ability of allowing a lien to secure that? Yes. We're all in favor of that, so we're good, thank you. Do you have any additional feedback to share on this topic? Any thoughts you wanna have Lindsay capture? Nope? Okay, if anything comes to mind, send her an email. Non-substantive amendments to a development agreement. So, currently, the MGA, amendments to a development agreement are heard and approved by council. There's a process for that. Amendments can be non-substantive or substantive. A development agreement may identify the matters which are not substantive or matters that are. Amendments to a development agreement that are considered non-substantive do not require a public hearing. Changes were made in the HRM charter to allow the development officer to approve non-substantive amendments to the development agreement to expedite the development process. So, the question is, for changes to the MGA, would you support, well, the proposal is that development officer through the MGA would have the same power. And it would not apply to substantive matters, only non-substantive matters. So, does your municipality support the proposed change to allow a development officer to approve or refuse non-substantive agreements, amendments to development agreements? That's a great question. Oh, I'm gonna do this, I don't know. I'm just saying, non-substantive would be something like, you require to have a driveway that's going to be wide and then you're going to be far. I mean, the thing is insignificant. And those would have to be listed in the development agreement to substantiate non-substantive matters. And so, it would not be discretionary in terms of what the development officer is able to approve. If it's the draw, it won't have to be else. So, I, sorry, I don't have a, I'm just wanting to see what those kinds of matters are. How do you improve that? I just have to take the interpretation of the words as being what I expect them to be as non-substantive is something that nobody's gonna get an issue for. But, it's actually not gonna be to the letter of the agreement, so we allow that development officer to do that. Okay. There we go, thank you. Do you have any feedback to share on this proposed change? So, one of the things that I would say as an example of this is, if you've been on council a couple of years, a few years, maybe, maybe this is your second term. Sometimes, we come forward with housekeeping amendments, right, unto our bylaws. Those are non-substantive, but because there's a bylaw amendment process, we have to do them. Even when it's just renumbering, we have to bring them back and get them approved through the regular process, which sometimes includes an ad in the paper. So, the non-substantive thing, I do think makes sense in the development agreement. I actually think it makes sense in bylaws too, but we'd have to have a list of what, of what that includes. Anyway, we'll march on. Provisional approval of a development agreement supporting the amendments. So, changes were made to the HRM charter to allow council to provisionally approve a development agreement or amendment to a development agreement during the same public hearing as council passes supporting amendments to a municipal planning strategy, a land use bylaw and/or municipal planning strategy and the supporting amendment to the land use bylaw to improve efficiency during the development approval process. Similar changes to the MGA is being contemplated. This would allow the development agreement to be considered fully approved when the amendment to the MPS or another movie takes effect. The appeal period would not be affected by the change. So, right now, you're probably familiar with a concurrent amendment. So, when we amend the municipal planning strategy and we have bylaw amendments and it's done concurrently, that means that as the strategy is approved, the bylaw amendment's approved at the same meeting and you move forward. This is proposing to rule development agreements into that same kind of space so that you can save a month or two. So, as we're asking, staff are asking, the committees are asking that a, that the strategy be amended or the bylaw be amended and the amendment is about this agreement, right, that we wanna do. It kinda makes sense that you could be able to do it all together. The nice thing about this is that the development agreement appeal period exists because it does not exist with a concurrent MPS and land use bylaw amendment. You do that concurrently, there's, what's lost in the appeal opportunity there is that you can't argue that the bylaw is inconsistent with the planning strategy, which is one of the bases on which you can appeal. A concurrent amendment is not appealable on that basis. We had that around the land use, or sorry, the FUBA amendment that we made once upon a time. So, the question is, does your municipality support this proposed change to provisional approval? So, provisional, of course, subject to appeal. We do? Okay. And do you have feedback to share on that proposed change? Any thoughts you wanna share? Okay, move along. What number are we on here, Lindsay? Twenty, what? Twenty-two, okay, we're gonna move on. Transfer of land or cash in lieu based on the incident. Requirements for transfer of land or equivalent value of cash and lieu for parks, playgrounds, similar public purposes are permitted under the legislation as part of the subdivision bylaw. Land transfer is not exceed five percent of the area of the lot shown to be approved on the final plan subdivision or ten percent of the area of the lot shown to be approved on the final plan subdivision. We've heard that legislation is limited to the subdivision process and does not consider the transfer of land or cash in lieu of multi-unit developments. So, this is understood to mean that residential buildings containing multiple dwelling units, i.e. apartment buildings or condominiums. So, if you subdivide land and you make three, room for three houses, you've gotta give us something for parks and open space to, for the life, quality of life of the, of the future residents. But you can put up a twenty-unit apartment building on a existing single lot and you don't have to give us anything to support the quality of life. So, that's what this is driving at. So, the question, is your municipality seeing increasing pressure on recreational or open space assets from the addition of multi-unit residential developments? Feel like we're seeing, are you hearing about pressure for recreational open space assets? Sideways, but is that an open space asset? We have six, so, we've got four noes. I think that is probably fairly, fairly accurate. Has the ability to require, have the ability to require a parkland dedication contribution as part of the approval process of multi-unit, of multi-unit residential developments?
Question is, would your municipality be interested in having the ability to require?
Okay, thank you. Would your municipality be interested in having? Okay. So, would you like to receive five percent or some other percent of value for park and open space dedication from multi-unit developments?
Question, the development up on Topkane Road, was there any requirement from you to them?
So, that was when they first acquired that, it was one lot. And they subdivided it, they put in the old street, those Sarah Corning, little cul-de-sac thing. So, there was, at the time, a requirement because it was initially one lot.
Would that be the same case of the other ones, like on Sawdust Trail?
Uh, I can't speak to Sawdust Trail. On Jarvis Road, there's a few somewhere. Yep, same thing, that was one piece of land subdivided and we would have received the five percent of that.
Okay, thank you.
And it's five percent of the land, right, not five percent of the finished product, right? So, we said yes to this. Thank you. Do you have any additional feedback to share with us on this topic? Okay? If you do, admin and town we have to see. Site plan approvals, external appearance of structures. So, currently under the MGA, site plan approvals may deal with several external elements of the development. However, it does not directly reference controls on external appearance of structures. This can be, currently be done, this can currently be done for hazard right development and for development agreements. Both are the application standards set out in the land use bylaw. Architectural controls are currently implemented by some municipalities through land use bylaw. We do have some of that in our town. The contemplated change is to include external appearance of structures in the list of topics that a site plan may deal with. So, typically, site plan has, we approve, where driveways can be, we can onsite, drainage considerations, that sort of thing, but this is about external appearance buildings. Does your municipality support this proposed change to include external appearance of structures in the list of topics that a site plan may deal with? That would be any development within a site plan. Five to one for yes. Okay, does your municipality... Okay, does your municipality find the legislation a barrier to implementing external appearance controls on site plans?
Is that current legislation, is that...
Yes.
Emily, you didn't have to answer that question for me, Jack. Yeah, I'm ready. We built some of that into the, you think we can do enough?
Yeah, we did in, in downtown particularly, right? And that's right, in the area, it's just... I would say, I would say yes to this because it's not something that we have as a regular routine. Show me what this is going to look like. So there are good examples, and one example would be duplexes built on William Street where one of the, one of the old Gothic homes had burned down and we were so concerned. The original design of that building didn't include any nice architectural features. I mean, yeah, it didn't include any extras. And so there was, it was a discussion, but no, we didn't have a hammer. Same thing when we first acquired the property on Kemp Street. The developer there was going to come in and build some semi-detached homes to sell, a little subdivision there. And we didn't have, I might have threw a development agreement process, but again, it was a discussion. But gee, we'd like to see something a little more imaginative. I think we even had that, some of that discussion at this table around the property on...
Vancouver Street.
Vancouver Street. So it would be better if the legislation was stronger because that does full-time time become an issue. Thank you. Do you have any additional feedback to share on this topic? Okay, move along. Site plan approvals, performance bond. So currently under the MGA, a development agreement may contain terms related to security or performance bonding. We have heard that municipalities would like to allow for performance or security bonding as part of site plan approval. So that's a different process, site plan approval. Performance bonding, for example, may allow developers to secure an occupancy permit, even though landscaping cannot be completed until the spring. This commitment is, is performance bonded. So just as this says, somebody builds, they finish the building in December. The development permit required landscaping. They don't get their occupancy permit until they get everything done. So we performance bond it, we would take a performance bond, they could get their occupancy permit. And if they don't execute when the construction season comes around, then the town has the, has the means to, to see that it be done at the developer's expense. Does your municipality support a proposed change, a proposed change to allow for performance bonding for site plan approvals? Okay, thank you. Do you have any additional feedback to share on the topic? And I would tell you, we would use that authority sparingly if we could. Add rent bonds and plan with it, I'd rather people just get done what they need to get done as part of the approval and we don't have to add that extra stuff, but sometimes it's necessary. So appeal, site plan approvals. A property owner or applicant may make an appeal to a site plan approval or refusal. The process and notification procedures and rights of appeal are the same as those for various. Council may make any decision that the development officer could have made, whether it to uphold or overturn the decision of the development officer. We've heard that some site plan appeals are delaying the development approval process as there's a lack of clarity in the legislation on what can be appealed to. Is your municipality experiencing issues related to site plan appeal process?
Howard?
The answer is no. You've not been asked to weigh in, we've not had a hearing to appeal a site plan approval. I don't think since any of you have been on council and maybe not since I've been involved. Oh. There's a skip. There we are, no. All right. Do you feel clarity is needed in what property owners can appeal related to site plans? Now, on this one, I would say yes. And I would rely on my colleagues to say if they feel it's vague, let's clarify it so that if we ever are faced with it, it's clear, so...
Clarity is always a good thing.
Clarity is always better than... Oh, yeah, the one. Okay, we'll just leave that text box blank, so. Say yes and we'll, we'll leave the text box blank. All right. Okay, are there any other feedback on, on that issue of appealing of site plans? Okay. Instruments of subdivision. I wish Greg were here. Currently, the subdivision by instrument is authorized in the MGA and provincial subdivision regulations. Subdivision by instrument permits owners to request subdivision approval without the involvement of a surveyor. The contemplated change is to repeal instruments of subdivision and no longer allow lots to be subdivided via this tool. Does your municipality support this proposed change related to instruments of subdivision? Let me tell you my only experience with instruments of subdivision. Towny Yarmit, Towny Yarmit purchased some property adjacent to the waste park a few years back. It was a hundred acres of, off of a lot that was probably five hundred acres. The cost of having a surveyor to survey that was many thousands versus an instrument of subdivision, which is basically a written description of the event. Doesn't require an onsite survey. So we were able to acquire a hundred acres in wooded land with a, a, the deal wouldn't have happened. We just, it wouldn't have been feasible, the seller wouldn't have taken the hit and the buyer wouldn't have, wouldn't have paid the extra money. So it served a purpose. There may be times when it, when it's a problem for rural municipalities. It does not happen in town. So I just, I'd hate to see it go away because I've seen where it's used before. Now, what issues will that create down the road for somebody else in the municipality? I don't know, but that's my experience with instruments of subdivision.
Question is, in support of change, what was, was it...
Change would be to, to get rid of instruments.
And would require a surveyor?
You would require a surveyor for every subdivision of land to, to post in the ground and do the, do the whole search, the whole thing they do. Well, I would say if, if the lots that are being consolidated are already surveyed, you typically get a plan done on, but that would be cheaper, right?
Sorry, I mean, not that my property is worth a substantial price, but you know, I live outside of a property that is managed by surveyors, which we haven't been able to apply. If I were to subdivide property, given that I have those markers under the existing regulation, would I be able to do that with a certain...
No, no, I think, I think it only applies to larger. I don't think it applies to normal town-sized lots.
So it would be, yeah, like five hundred acres.
Yeah, it's only, it's only ever used in some instances.
Okay, do you have any addition? Oh, that looked like, sorry, I didn't have six. I need, I need everybody in, we're missing a hole here. There we go, that's enough. Well, it's going to be a no either way because if it had been a tie, tie goes to the runner. Do you have any additional feedback to share on that topic?
I think you should write that story up.
Write the story?
Yes.
Okay, sure. You got that. Retroactivity of deemed easements prior to nineteen ninety-eight. So under section twenty, two eighty dash two of the MGA, the owners of lots shown on a plan of subdivision as a budding on a private right-of-way are deemed to have an easement over the private right-of-way for vehicular and pedestrian access to the lot and for the installation of electricity, telephone and other services to the lot. The contemplated change is to amend the MGA by clarifying that deemed easements on a plan of subdivision are retroactive prior to the enforcement of this section. This amendment will benefit those who currently do not have easements, have easement access and clear up confusion for deeds that were established before the section was proclaimed in nineteen ninety-eight. Does your municipality support this proposed change related to deemed easements? I think this brings clarity. Frankly, I think this is, it doesn't... I was going to say it doesn't affect us, but that might be, it would have minimal effect on us. There may be a case after that we're not aware of. Almost, you know, there's always going to be the one that pops up as soon as I say there are none. Right. Do you have any additional feedback to share on that topic? Deemed easements. Selling or leasing property below market value. So currently under section fifty-one, municipalities may sell property at a price less than market value to a nonprofit organization that council considers to be carrying on an activity that is beneficial to the municipality. The proposed change is to expand this municipal power to permit municipalities to sell or lease below market value for additional purposes, such as the purpose of increasing affordable housing or the transfer of property between governments for public infrastructure. This may include schools, roads, transportation infrastructure, bus, train stations and hospitals. So, does your municipality support the selling or leasing of property below market value for the following additional purposes? To increase the availability of affordable housing. Oh, the twins? Okay. They can, they can do this on here. Oh. Okay, so do, do, would you support our ability to sell land at below market value to increase affordable housing? If your answer is yes, please raise your hand. Thank you, that's low tech. To a public entity for the purpose of public infrastructure, i.e. schools, roads, hospitals. Yes to that. None of the above, I guess we're not there, other? Are there other things that you could think of that you want to inform them? You would like to sell land below market value?
What are the Legion asks for? Harpsaw land creates...
They're not for profit, so they would, they'd be submitted. Not in terms of immediate mind, so. One, one thing that does come to mind, and I know this will never fly, but sometimes for economic development, for development, for industry, it might make sense. You're trying to, you're, I'll just use this example, you're the municipality, you have an industrial park. You're trying to coordinate, competing, to attract. If you can't negotiate on the price of the land, you're forced to, to come up with a package that doesn't include land below market value. You know, we don't have many tools when it comes to economic development. I'm not saying we want to give everything away, right, but that's, that's an idea.
So if, for example, if I had a business and there's a small parcel of land adjacent to my business that's over by the town, that is priced for more than it's worth to me, however, it would be an asset to the business and it might, and something I'm going to put it back on tax. I think that's considered or not?
Yeah, I, I do, I think that, again, that, that's a situation where if the value of the land is more than you're willing to pay, you don't agree with the value or you're not willing to pay it, but the town might see a public benefit. Expansion of the business, job creation, increases of the tax rule. You know, might, there might be an argument there. Well, there is, there is a special section for that, that, that we can, we can deal with when there are, you know, for, for that kind of reason, a limited, limited market. There is a section, I can't quote it for you, but there is something there. If you want to put that kind of development in there or just leave it.
I just need to slam the door.
You what, you, I'm sorry?
I need to close the door on it, so there's no option to do that.
Well, so, so an example would be we now own the, we own, we now own the property at, was it three oh five million? Right, so that will have a market value, I think we've established what that is. We had it assessed or appraised already, I think it's fifty thousand or so. So if we want to sell that land to someone who wants to develop something there, the price, the minimal price is set.
So we give it to them at a great price and then somebody, some other developer says that we're practicing something underneath it, I say stay out of that.
Okay. Do you have any concerns or feedback on enabling the selling or leasing property below market value? Share those. We can share those comments, how will we do that? Talk about economic development, talk about it and we'll talk about the, the possible blowback on that as, as part of our discussion, we should, you got that? Okay. Does your municipality have other issues we'd like to be, we should be aware of as part of the MGA review that you would like to see addressed? This is the last question, is it? It is, so it's open-ended. I know you've all studied the MGA because you knew this was coming. Are there other issues that you would like to see them look at?
Can you speak to the issue regarding the election?
Yep, yep. So the issue, and this is an issue I've talked to, talked to the mayor about and I've talked to AMA about and anyone who will listen for the last number of years. I can tell the long story or the short story, whichever you'd like. The, the, one of the things that I, that I believe is that we would be better off if we had fewer municipalities, right? And one of the concerns with that that I have is that we used to be fewer municipalities or townships and we became separate for a reason. And the reason that we became separate is that the towns, and they used to be called towns even when they weren't, had different interests than the more rural areas. And the electoral system back in the day was as it is now, elected in, in districts. And the towns that exist in the province today largely exist because of the difference in needs and the fact that infrastructure would not, would not happen if everyone had to pay for it. And so they separated. Councils weren't willing, because they were districts, to deal with the issues in the economic hubs. So towns separated and became separate corporate entities. The problem with putting it back is that right now, under the MGA, or amalgamating or consolidating, is if you put it back under the MGA, you would become a district municipality or a regional municipality. And section, I think it's section eight of the MGA says that you, in a district or regional municipality, you can only elect one councillor per ward. So if it's all a one ward system, you elect, you can't elect one councillor, like you have to have a minimum of three. have to have a minimum of three. So you have to have three wards, each with their own councillor as a minimum. So you can never have a situation when you're anything but a town where the councillors are elected at large, or even a, a share of the councillors. So in Newfoundland, they have the ability to have half and half. They have that in Conception Bay South, Paradise, St. John's, and Cornerburg. They have half their councillors at large and half of them elected in districts. And what I've heard from CAOs in Newfoundland is that that works well. The council, the citizens have representatives, particularly in their area, but they also have councillors at large, which you're very familiar with, and the system works. Out west, in the western provinces, council can, through a bylaw, have councillors elected at large or in districts. They don't even have to go through a UARB process in some of the prairie provinces. In B.C., every municipality, including the city of Vancouver, are elected at large. That's, it's a different culture. So what we have on the east coast here, and in Nova Scotia, is a culture that was created over 150 years ago of electing in, in districts, and that's what we still have. And I shared with you through an email, an excerpt from, from local newspaper, from 132 years ago, that talked about some of the behavioral challenges of having a district elected system, and how the Town Yarmouth was the first town in Nova Scotia, one of the first in Canada, to go with a one-ward system where all councillors were elected at large. And that, you know, we've, we've, we've had it for almost all of the time that we've had a town of Yarmouth. So what I'm advocating for, what I'm suggesting, and what I do advocate for, is that at least you have the choice. So we have a cultural tradition of districts, and in fact, a legal requirement of districts in our rural areas, we don't have the choice. And so what I would like to see in the MGA is in section eight, that it, that it basically be eliminated, so that a council that wished to try what they do in Newfoundland and have half and half could go to the UARB and say, we would like this, and here's our study, here's our reasons why, as, as they have to right now to justify what the firm system is if they want to change it. And the UARB would be free to consider it because it would be a legal possibility. It could also change back, right, to all district system. If, if a future council felt that, you know, the old tradition is, is what worked well, they could make that case to the UARB and also get that approved. But right now, there's no choice. And so you can't do what they do in the western provinces, you can't do what they do in the easternmost province. You can only do one thing in Nova Scotia. So I, I do believe that there are different possibilities that could improve local government. That's one. Not everyone's going to agree with me on it, but I think having the possibility opens the door to, to different thoughts and, and, you know, someone will try it in this province at some point, and then we'll have local, you know, a local case study that people can look at and either embrace or, or say, you know, sorry, not for me. So that's the one thing that I think stands between the interests of town citizens and why their, why our forefathers felt it necessary to have a town, and some of our more current, more contemporary discussions about putting things back together, is that issue and that piece of the legislation is an encumbrance to thinking about reorganizing local government. And so that's, that's the long story. I gave you the option, then I didn't listen, I just went ahead.
So I'd like to make a motion that council direct the CAO to include our wishes with regard to the MGA and, and districts, districting, to eliminate the section that restrains elections to districts.
Elections to, yeah, restricts to elected.
Yeah. And provides more flexibility to municipalities in how they, how they govern themselves.
Have a second there?
I'll say that.
Okay. Counselor Diers, or is that you just wanted to second that?
If you want to vote on that motion first, I've got a comment. Thank you.
No more discussion? All in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Counselor Diers, go ahead.
Yeah, it occurs to me that in the absence of her worship, that it's highly likely that she'll have other issues that we may not think of.
Yes.
So it might be worth considering to just do a check-in with her?
Great point.
Absolutely.
Good.
One of the things that she was hoping, and she expressed to me, is that she hoped, and I think she put it in emails, is that she hoped this was only phase one, that there are other issues, other sections of the MGA, that we may get similar surveys, and seeking your, seeking your opinion. So I appreciate your, your indulgence, and I'm sure they will as well, your time and your thoughtfulness into these questions. So next time we have one, we'll try and get it out to you with a little more lead time so you can do some of your own research and find out what the strained goods are. Thank you.
All good. 10B, 2022 Business Award Sponsorship. So we were sent out, there's a attachment here on the agenda that shows a few different options to support this. I believe one was, the first one's 3,000, here's a gold partner for 1750, an award sponsor for 1250, and a corporate sponsor for 500, and Mayor Mood has left a note here to say that her thoughts would be the award sponsor at 1250. Anyone else? Counselor Diers, go ahead.
Yeah, just a two-part question is, I'm not aware, have we supported this in the past? And we have? Okay, that, I guess the other part of the question is redundant then, thank you.
Any more discussion?
Deputy Mayor, I'll, I'll make the motion that we support the Nova Scotia or the Town of Yarmouth Business Awards or the area, Chamber of Commerce Business Awards, let's do it right, as an award sponsor.
So that would be for, second it, and that'll be for 1250, just so people are aware. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. No additions? Do we have anything in camera?
Uh, no. E... What's that?
We do?
Let's start quickly.
So motion to go in, or motion to adjourn, or motion to go in camera, I guess, right? Move, second it, all in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Contrary...